Robinson.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
Bestel.
Here.
Hite.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
The quorum is present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can I ask that we stand for the prayer and the pledge to be led by Ward Two. Alderman Thomas will do the prayer and Alderman Robinson the pledge. Alderman Thomas?
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow again in Thy presence, I want to thank Thee again for all the many blessings of life. I want to thank Thee for the opportunities that we have to serve here in the city. We're thankful for each one that have come tonight. We'd ask that the things that we do here would be in accordance with Thy will, for it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move or adoption?
Second.
I'm gonna amend.
Uh...
Sorry, May.
Motion made and seconded. The minutes of the previous meeting be approved. submitted on the motion, Ms. Whitby.
Yildin.
Here.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Let's go to Communications, Blank a motion.
Second.
Alderman Gibson's present, Ms. Whitby.
Thank you.
Note that Alderman Gibson was a little late to the meeting, but he's now present.
We may have to expunge this vote.
Yeah, point of order. Can he make a motion without being present?
Uh, well, the city attorney says yes. And we welcome back our city attorney assistant now, Morley. We're glad to have you with us and glad to have you back on board again. Motion made by Alderman Gibson, present Alderman Gibson, and seconded by Alderman Witcher, that we file items one through six, and I'd like to pull item six. If any council member would like any others pulled, on the motion, one through five then.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Would you just read item six by title?
Yes, sir. This is a letter from Mike Hobson, the group director for Bake Line Group. It's regarding a plant located at 113 South Olive, which is planning to close on March the ninth, resulting in the termination of 120 jobs.
Can I have a motion that I'd like to make a comment or two? So moved. Motion made and seconded that we accept and file. I have learned that unfortunately, on several counts, one, that is Jackson Cookie Company. For those who may not be familiar with Bake Line Group, you know, we know Jackson Cookie Company, for those of us that were raised here, has been there virtually forever. And so that, that letter is indeed sad, but even on a sadder note, it's my understanding that they are closed as of now. And I was told that that was due to some financing that was supposed to have come through, didn't come through. And the only thing, you know, that you might add to that is that not just North Little Rock, that's the entire company now. You know, the article that I read in Arkansas Business that was emailed, did seem to indicate that it may, there may be an opening back up, but I'm not sure. They're supposed to give a notification, a longer advance notice than obviously what was done. But from what I am told, that business is now closed. There are several things that we as a community will do in working with those workers to try to, you know, work with various state and other local agencies to ensure that the benefits that are available for people that are displaced like this obtain those benefits. And working with Mr. Larson of our Economic Development Corporation to make sure we do everything we know how to ease the pain and certainly disruption that these 120 previously North Little Rock employees at this facility are now apparently out of work. So it's, it's not good news, but I, you know, I don't know how exactly the best way that we can get in contact with them, but Mr. Larson will be working on that, and we're gonna do everything we can to try to be of any assistance as possible. With that, on the motion to accept and file.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Let me welcome a, not real new to this area, but reasonably new, Nan Plummer. Nan took over from Townsend Wolf. Nan, if you want to come to the, that microphone right there. You know, this community, and I certainly appreciate it, stepped forward last year with the support of this council, became a financial partner with the Arkansas Art Center. We've been a partner with the Art Center for a number of years, with our people enjoying the programs and the presentations and the theater and the things that you, you and the Art Center does so well. And we are very proud to be a financial participant in supporting that and look forward to continuing that relationship. I asked Nan if she would like to come over and say hello, so we could see a face behind the articles that we read. And so Nan, we welcome you and thank you again for what you and that center does for us, for the state and for the arts. And we're proud to be probably more of our residents are closer to your facility than I'd say half the city of Little Rock. So we're glad you're a neighbor, even though you're a little bit across the pond, but not too far. Nan Plummer, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank you, City Council, and all the community that you represent for your support as participants in the Arkansas Art Center and for the recent financial contribution, which I know you know will allow the city's support to be made much of in the pages of our newsletter for the next year. But, but also it's symbolic as well as practical in opening doors to new kinds of collaborations. And we've begun already, and I don't want to say exactly what, but Michael Drake at Main Street Argenta, and I've already had some preliminary conversations about how the Art Center can help celebrate the centennial. So we're very excited about, about what lies ahead and very grateful for the, for the support and commitment that your recent gift means. Thanks a lot.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for what you do. We continue to look forward to do even better and greater things with the work that you and the Art Center does. Thank you, Nan. Alderman Gibson?
Mr. Sisson, I don't, one particular question. Do we need specifically to accept and file the budget as an item? The audit report.
Yeah, I probably think that, but there's no reason that we shouldn't.
I think number four, I think we should call it and accept and file it as a specific item.
Oh, that's fine. Practical purposes, I think that what we did covered it, but I certainly don't have an objection. The motion made that we specifically accept and file item number four is a seconded motion, motion made and seconded. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
We are now in, still in presentations. I know we've got a room full of folks and we're excited about you being here. Dean Edwards, where's Dean?
Right.
And Jake Broadway, I see Jake down there. How are we gonna do this? And let's begin thanking people for being a part of our parade. Dean Edwards, Dean, will let you sort of emcee or at least give us directions of how you want to do this.
Well, we need to get, the recipient needs to get the picture made with you and our president Jake Broadway. Sheriff Bruno's gonna hand me the telephies and I'll hand them to you all.
Yeah. I'd like to thank everyone for participating in the Christmas parade. We had a great parade, I think. It's one of our better ones. This parade is put on by the North Little Rock Surtoma Club and it's backed up by the mayor, Becky Taylor, Chamber of Commerce. Stephanie Sutton is the parade secretary down at the Chamber of Commerce office. We've got a few people around the city that this is not new to them, they've been here in 20 years. I'm gonna mention a few of the names. Junior, Junior Nefilts, he's been furnishing the judging stand 20 years. Art Easton with Art Connoir Warehouse, he's been furnishing a boat trailer to put Santa Claus slate on. The Golf Prosha's been furnishing the golf carts. The main one has really always done a lot is the North Little Rock Park System. Bob Rhodes, Willie Elzandro, and Kenny Johnson, you know, they've been, Kenny's been, had a group, they've been picking up the golf carts and after's over, taking them back to the Burns Park. They've been taking the tables down at the, across the bank over here and to put on the judging stand. And of course, we have Margaret's been making sure we have a photographer every year. She can't get anyone, she has to herself. It's Margaret Pal. But anyway, I'd like to thank everyone for, for this. Is anyone here, is Kenny Johnson here from the park system? He's not here? Well, I've got a little plaque I'd like to present to him. He's been working... Uh, Willie, could you come? Okay. Kenny's been here for 10 years on delivering all those tables and stuff down here for the judging stand. And get up there and get your picture made there. Okay, the next Surtoma special award is the Santa Claus.
What about someone on the board? Come up to the back. He's on the board. He's the captain for the district center. The next in the Surtoma special award is for the firefighters local number 35.
She's firing.
Are we sure? Thank you. Well, now, what is that? Fireman. We're looking.
This is auxiliary, firefighters' auxiliary, and local 35. Another Surtoma special award for the North Little Rock Lectures Department. Come up here, we know who that is. If anyone's not here and hearing this tonight, we're gonna have them down at the chamber office, so you can come in or we'll deliver them to you. The best rural fire truck entry, the third place, Scott Fire, voluntary fire department. Anyone here from Scott? Well, sure are. That's down my way, Mayor. Grabber Reed Fire Department. Number five. Okay, the next rural fire department, second place, Grabber Reed Fire Department. Is this number six? Okay, the best rural fire, fire entry, first place, East Plaskett County Fire and Rescue. Okay, the best city fire department. This is the truck, parade truck entry. Anyone from the North Little Rock Fire Department? Look at Randy trying to get in there. The next one is the North Little Rock High School Junior ROTC Marching Unit. Anyone here from the... I believe they are. The best marching group, first place, Arkansas National Guard Youth Challenge. Is Bob Jackson here? Bob Eastwell's step here. The drill team, second place, Arkansas National Guard Youth Challenge. Okay, the first place, the North Little Rock High School Junior ROTC Drill Team. Well, I guess they might, they probably didn't know they were getting another and they probably just left. They were here on that other. Yeah, they sure were. Oh, here they are. And you've got another one coming too. Okay, this is the best antique fire truck. Second place, Little Rock Fire Department.
Come again.
Okay, first place, the North Little Rock City Antique 31 Model Seagraze Fire Truck, local 35.
All right. There we go.
Best business and commercial, third place, D&amp;J Locksmith. Is anyone from D&amp;J Locksmith here? Okay, second place, best business and commercial, Rick's Dive and Travel Center. Anyone here from the dive and travel on Poplar? Okay, first place, Central Arkansas Water. Anyone here from Central Arkansas Water?
Yeah, we are here.
Okay, this is the best performing group, Mrs. Karen Day's studio. Well, they got uniforms on.
They do.
How you doing? Is it working better? No, there's no ears on. Okay, the junior ROTC Marching Unit, third place. Don't reckon they left again, do you? We'll catch them later. Panther Cheerleaders, anyone from Panther Cheerleaders here? North Little Rock High School Junior ROTC, that was the one before. Now, this one is the Panther Cheerleaders.
Well, there they are. Wait a minute.
Okay, we need the ROTC back up here. First place, best school performing Oak Grove Youth Cheerleaders. The No Limit Riding, anyone here with the No Limit Riders? Okay, the next would be the Trailblazer Riding Club. Anyone here from the Trailblazers?
There is.
Best commercial or business vehicle decorated, the first place, Razorback Concrete Twinkle Truck. Anyone here from Razorback Concrete? Okay, what about Brownie Troop 61, second place? Any Brownies here? Okay, we have first place, St. Mary's Girl Scouts. Appreciate you. Come back next year. The British Motor and Club of Arkansas, second place. Anyone here with the British Motor and Unit? Central Arkansas Vokes Folks, anyone with Central Ark Vokes Folks? Okay, the 32, Central Arkansas PT Cruiser Club. I don't believe the car people are out tonight. They're probably out cruising.
Out cruising, that's right.
What about Arkansas Dirt Riders? Anyone with the bikers here tonight? Okay, best beauty entry, Miss Black Teen Turpuggets.
Who are, who are, who are we? We are, we are Miss Black Teen, we serve the service. Hey! We're the educationee cousins.
Mr. Anderson, is the Taquando Butts here? I believe they are.
Good. Good day. All right. All good. Good day!
Come on down, sir. Good day.
Margot, are you here tonight? Center Pouring Energy, best miscellaneous entry, second place. Anyone from Energy? Best miscellaneous, first place, North Little Rock Animal Shelter. There you go. Best municipality, third place, North Little Rock Sanitation. Anyone from Sanitation, Harold, anybody? Harold? Appreciate it, come on up, how you did it? Let's go right over here. Thank you. Thanks, all right. Thank you for sanitation, we appreciate you. That's attitude, Harold said we're gonna be number one next year. We have the North Little Rock Police Department Citizen Academy Alumni Association, anyone? Second place. There we go. Very good. That's a motivated Butts, huh? Very good, thank y'all. Thank y'all. First place, for the North Little Rock City Municipality, is the Park Maintenance Freedom Float. Anyone from... Yeah, Mr. Alizondo's there. Alizondo, yeah. Good, thanks. Best church float, Saint Matthew's Church, no, second place for the best church float, Saint Matthew's Church of God and Christ. Okay, thank you very much, all right. First place, best church float, Lakewood United Methodist Churches. Good, thank y'all. Chairman's Choice, Miss Karen's Dance Studio. We need to have a little bit of a break where you get a little bit of a...
You want to hold it again? Did you hold it the last time?
Do you have my permission to kick him in the chin? He fits right in with them.
All right, here we go. There we go. All right, everybody has to get, let's say one, two, three, nine, three, half. All right. All right, guess what, they're pretty happy. Very good. You got one more, right? Got one more, yes. Yeah, it is. The last, uh, entry presenting today will be the Mayor's Cup. Uh, the trophy's for, uh... For a performing arts group on Twelveth and Louisiana Street. They opened up in nineteen ninety-three. And, uh, they're open from February to Labor Day. For, they have picture and everything from outstanding, uh, black history people and is Miss Dodson, or Mr. Dodson here from, uh... Okay. They have a summer, summer youth program too. Imoba? Okay. Thank y'all. We appreciate everybody. Thank you, Mayor, I please. Council. We're gonna have to carry things inside.
Joe Smith, bring us some water.
For who? Yeah.
That's good thing they're here.
No, we need to fill it up. Appreciate you.
Is your name Ernie or your husband? I couldn't figure, I tried to call him today. I couldn't figure, I said, is he from Doctor Ernie or here?
I'm gonna come over and see over there at your deal.
They're not gonna pull me. That'd be, this will be this. Here and then the traffic will go back there. Use that four-way stop, I know how it is, I have to go all the way. And I'm like, you know, I don't think there's any need to put a...
Yes, sir.
You can talk and laugh, or you can tell me where you got them.
Do you want this drink? Did you hear me?
You don't wait till the end, me riding down here with another note. And wastewater's the one that didn't work?
Yeah, these holes, we've had the, the mine going through the center.
They ain't too slick, I'm getting it done real quick, but I'll, I'll...
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, we had a, we had a water line broken in the floor. They took them, all they do is...
You're not into the workers' comp.
Well, I tell you what, she, she's a sweetie, I, I, I don't think there's anything sweeter than a little girl. Yeah, I do too. Thanks, man.
Randy?
Our own offense.
Hey, how you doing?
Is it, I don't know if it's acceptable, we just won't pick up the bill.
Well, we all have more. Yeah, we need some more, it's, yeah, just bring, have Joe bring some.
Oh, I can wait.
Anybody, anybody want water, raise your hands.
Well, if she likes it, not a minute.
I want hamburgers next time.
Thank you.
Let me, uh, let me go ahead and, uh, and reconvene, uh, this regular meeting of the city council and honor our agenda. It, uh, shows that, you know, we, uh, are, are, have a public hearing regarding an appeal of the assessment benefits concerning Council Passy, uh, Collins Road in this one improvement district. Mr. Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald, do you hear? Uh, Fitzgerald is, uh, and I am told, this is the, the first time that I've been involved in this, Mr. Morley, uh, would you kind of generally let us know, uh, the, uh, the law with regard to this deal and, uh, give us a little description on, uh, what, what we anticipate the council needs to consider?
Uh, basically, Your Honor, what this is, is Mr. Fitzgerald, as a member of the Improvement District, has the right to appeal the assessment that's placed on his property. And the city council rules on his petition of appeal to the city council. If you deny him, then he has the opportunity to appeal to Circuit Court and have it heard there. Uh, from the standpoint of, of the logistics of how it occurs, it's really not that clear under the statutes. These are fairly old and arcane statutes. But what we would envision is that someone, we would file a resolution in blank for the next meeting that you can vote on either up or down, whether you support his appeal or deny his appeal. And from that, he could appeal to Circuit Court.
Let me ask this, does this, uh, does this council, uh, assuming that obviously the assessment isn't a dollar amount, if this council, um, sets an amount that is, do we have the authority to set an amount? Or are we just, uh, I don't know, we really, I mean, is there any variation of the funds that comes down?
I think you probably do have the authority to set an amount, Your Honor. Uh, otherwise, that it would be somewhat meaningless with respect to that.
Let me, uh, let me make this suggestion, and, and that is, uh, Mr. Thurman, who is the legal counsel for the district, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, let me, uh, ask John to give an introduction and refresh our memory. I know Mr. Fitzgerald was here once before. Uh, it would be my intent, and I'm asking the city attorney to go ahead and file a resolution, uh, listening to his sponsor, that would essentially allow us to, uh, in the form of that resolution, make a decision, maybe perhaps work with Mr. Thurman and, and give us, uh, whatever flexibility that, uh, that, that the council may have, either deny or approve. And if we approve, what amount, uh, that, that we might modify the district's assessment. Uh, and then, uh, we'll deal with actually the decision part at the next council meeting and simply at this council meeting, listen to Mr. Thurman and Mr. Fitzgerald and anything else that may want to be presented.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you need to listen to Mr. Larison.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you need to listen to Mr. Larison. The board of assessment consisted of Terry Path, Fred Glover, and Jan Zanoff. And then Jack Larison did the assessment, assessed values and assessed the property. So they're the ones that really hit, know the nuts and bolts of this. And in answer to your first question, the council sits as a board of equalization, just like the board of equalization does. If you're unhappy with your Pulaski County taxes, you go before the board and say they got them assessed too high or too low. And then the board makes the decision, and that's basically how this works.
The only thing I can say is that either we've not done very many of these, which I think is probably the case, or we've had everybody's been happy, because this is the first time in my fifteen, going on sixteen years, that we've done this.
First time in my forty-five years of practicing that I've done it, so.
Well, we're sure happy to do it, and if, you know, I'll, now, at this point, you know, turn it over to you so that we can somewhat set the stage for the council. Then I will depart to Mr. Fitzgerald for whatever he might like.
Okay, the process basically is, is simple. It's pretty difficult and complex mathematically. But when you do an improvement district, the value of that improvement is, is determined for each parcel of land by what it benefits that parcel of land. It's called an assessment of benefits. And if it, it basically, I guess, is driven by the improvement to the area, then improves the value of the property. And the major thing that you're looking for is to treat all property owners equally and make sure that the assessments are assessed equally. This particular project is both, involves two roads and a sewer district. Collins Road is going to be rebuilt and Council Massy Road from Mulmell Boulevard, Highway one hundred on into, and down the turn, will be rebuilt. And then a sewer line will be laid from just, just north of Collins Road on down to the end of the property. And it was up to the assessor to determine how that, that improvement, which improvement I think is going to run about two and a half million dollars, maybe a little less, but not much less, and how those improvements benefited the property. And in this particular instance, one reason it was complicated is because some people were, already had sewer, so they weren't benefited by the sewer. Some people were on Collins Road, and some people are on Council Massy Road. And so it was a pretty complex procedure of assessing the benefits that were applied to each piece of property. And Mr. Larison is here, I assume, since this is an appeal from his assessment by the Fitzgeralds, if they should go first, then Mr. Larison will be here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I mean, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference to me. You know, we've not done this either way, so I, you know, Mr. Fitzgerald, I'll leave it up to you. If you want to go first, you're welcome to. If you want to listen to what they have to say, then it really doesn't make any difference to me. Uh, go ahead then, sir. I know that you have submitted a letter for the council's consideration.
I'm not too used to standing in the fourth group either to make an appeal, because this is the first time I've ever done this also. But the basic problem with me is that I've been a resident of that area for twenty-eight and a half years. And I never anticipated that it would be my responsibility to have a special assessment against me to pay for supposedly my share of the road. I don't know of too many people that have lived at a place for twenty-eight and a half years, and then all of a sudden, the developers move in around me. And they want the road improved, and they want to, want me to pay for the road. And really, the road is going to make it smoother. But I've been dealing with that road for twenty-eight and a half years. It was dirt road when I moved out there. And as far as I'm concerned, the benefit to me on the road would just be that I have a smoother road to drive on. The sewer system, I have a septic tank system now, I've had for that long too. And it's, it's served me well also. But the bottom line is I'm not against the road improvement, and I'm not against the sewer improvement. All I want somebody to do, or you to do, is to make it affordable. Because as it stands right now, as I understand the tax, and I called Mr. Larison to give me the figure as to what the tax would be, he said it'd be point oh seven seven two percent for my benefit. Annual fee, is that correct, Mr. Larison? Okay. So I calculated that out, and it, it comes out to be seven thou, well, uh, the total will be seven thousand two hundred and twelve dollars a year. And I believe that includes my current assessment, which is six hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year. So that's over ten times what I'm currently paying. And I don't know, and I'm retired. That will take about twenty percent, just that one tax, will take twenty percent of my retirement income. And that doesn't include the other taxes I pay. So that's the first consideration from my standpoint that I'm looking at. The improvements are really not for me, they're for the people that are developing all that property out there. They've come in there in the last five years and bought all the property up. And they want a new road out there, and when they put a new road in, it's going to make that property a whole lot more valuable. And essentially, that's the argument they're using with me, that it's going to make my property a lot more valuable too. Well, I don't disagree with that. The problem is, the only way that I'm going to realize any value out of my property is I'm going to have to sell part of my property to realize the value. And I really don't want to be forced into doing that so that I can pay these special improvement taxes. My property's been basically used for the last twenty-eight and a half years as agricultural property. I've grown hay and raised vegetables and a few other things out there. That's what I like to do, and that's what I want to continue to do as long as I can. And I do not want to be forced into changing that because I cannot pay my property taxes to build a road that in essence I personally do not need. I agree that, again, that the road will be great for the area, be great for the development. And they've recently replanted twenty acres catticorne to me for forty-two houses and four commercial districts. Now, if you take that land across from me, I think he gave it about twice the value of mine. But anyway, if you divide the taxes up on forty-two people, the people that now own it, when they sell it, they will not be paying any taxes. They'll distribute amongst those forty-two people. And of course, that'll amount to about fifty dollars a month, maybe, for those people, or twenty-five to forty, I'm not sure exactly the figure. But anyway, they'll dilute the tax base a whole lot where those individual people can afford it very easily. And in essence, they'll probably drive just as many cars as I do, and they'll probably have more bathrooms to use for the sewer system in each one of those houses that's going to be developed across there. And I know they will be in the commercial places that'll be sold if they, whatever they do. Also, I understand from, from other people that about one-half to three-quarter mile from my property on Council Massy Road, the city of Mulmell and Pulaski County is kind of entering into an agreement to extend Council Massy to I forty. Now, whether that ever comes to pass or not, I'm not sure. But anyway, I know a few of the landowners out there, and there's going to be no cost to the landowners on that part of Council Massy Road. It's going to be all taken up by the city of Mulmell and Pulaski County. Now, here again, I know things can change, and I'm not privy to any of their conversation, but that's what I've been told by the mayor of Mulmell. During all the deliberations on this district, I've attended three of the meetings, three meetings they had. On the first, first two meetings, I believe it was, Acme Brick Company and McDonald's that's set at the end of Council Massy Road, catticorne to Mulmell Boulevard, were not even mentioned. As a matter of fact, they were left out of the special improvement district at the beginning of this process. Now, about the third meeting, all of a sudden, Acme Brick was re-included into the district. Now, I went to talk to the man at Acme Brick, but I got there a little bit late. And anyway, the basic bottom line was that he couldn't help me out because it was too late and that he would suffer consequences in his business if he did anyway. But anyway, I don't have any regrets to him, he's a businessman. I understand he has to do his business. But it just seems kind of ironic to me that on the first two occasions that they held the meetings to form this district, Acme Brick was not included. Also, at the end of the original district, Mr. Jimmy Greenfield has forty acres. And after the first meeting was over, he asked that his forty acres be excluded from the district. And I'm not exactly sure why, but I think he didn't really want to pay the fourteen thousand dollars that was originally estimated it was going to cost him for that portion of the road. But anyway, I'm close. As a matter of fact, I'm catticorne to Mr. Greenfield's property. And it seems to me like if Mr. Greenfield can receive that kind of treatment, looks to me like I ought to be able to receive that kind of treatment also. But here again, all of these are just from my personal standpoint. But it's going to cause, it's going to cause me a very significant impact on my retirement income and on my way of life if this goes through. And if I cannot sustain the six thousand, or six thousand five hundred and forty-four dollar annual payment for this improvement, to this special improvement, of cost of this special improvement districts. Now, my request last time was for mercy, and that's for my request this time. I'm simply asking that this property be assigned in the assessment of a value that I can afford. Because again, I want to emphasize, I'm not against these improvements. They're needed very much out there. I don't have anything against Country Club of Arkansas. They do a very good job out there. They got some beautiful developments out there, and they build some magnificent houses. And I'm sure they're all doing a very good job out there. I have nothing against any one of them. It's just that they've placed me in a position that I have to, that's going to have a significant impact upon my life. I would also like to ask, so therefore I'm asking for consideration on this, I guess, final appeal or whatever I have to do, because I really don't want to have to go to court. I don't have any desire to go to any kind of court in the whole wide world, for that matter. I've been there, I've done that, and I don't want to go back. Now, that doesn't exactly mean I won't, but I don't want to. Now, the other thing I would like to ask is that, wait just a minute, I want to point out a couple more things. How much time do I have?
Yeah, all the time you want.
Anyway, I've looked at the, the, uh, total benefits, and I have some questions about that, how it was calculated. Is Mr. Larison, you going to get up here and tell us how things were calculated? Do I need to make a specific? Okay. Well, I've noticed, first of all, that on the Country Club of Arkansas's property that's passed me on Council Massy, I know the road frontage is two thousand three hundred and ten foot. That will be on Council Massy Road, go down to the corner and take a right. And their total benefit according to this is going to be two hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. If I divide that by twenty-three hundred and ten, that comes out to a hundred and sixteen point seventy-eight. That's the cost to them for the benefits derived. Now, if you take my property, my benefit is eighty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And I have six hundred and six foot of road frontage. Divide that out, mine is a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. So I just wonder why mine is higher than theirs, since, since basically that on road frontage, not sure if they're including all their acreage, they're not in that. But I'm sure there's other things that are to be considered. But anyway, that seems to be a little bit of a difference there. And also, I notice on Acme Brick, Acme Brick is my big contention, not that, is that the Acme Brick benefits for this whole deal is five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And I know I walked off Acme Brick's frontage, and they got about four hundred and fifty foot of front of Council Massy Road. I know they don't have as much acreage as I do, but they have to use that road a whole lot more than I do because they got trucks and business and everything going in and out of there. But anyway, I've, I've only taken and divided two hundred of Acme Brick into there because I know it's only about two hundred of their road that's left undeveloped or unimproved from the original part. If I divide that into Acme Brick's assessment or benefit, that only comes out to twenty nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And I don't understand why, if they can get by with twenty-nine dollars a foot, and I have to pay a hundred and sixteen dollars. Anyway, I have several others in here, but I'll just speak to the ones that I have and the analysis that I made.
Yeah, Mr. Fitzgerald, the better you can direct your comments to that microphone as you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Ask questions, the better we all can hear, including the.
Did y'all hear all that?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I would appreciate a response from Mr. Larison on that. Uh, and also, I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. Do you know under what statute that this special improvement district is being formed? Okay, well, I took a little bit, and I looked up on the internet. Maybe Mr. Thurman knows. Do you know, Mr. Thurman?
Yes.
I want to make sure I have the right one.
You go ahead, Mr. Thurman can supply that, Mr. Fitzgerald, as soon as he can get it.
Okay. Well, anyway, I was just wondering about the assessment of benefits because I know that all that I received, and I had to come down to the city clerk's office to get this, was this one, that just tells about the total benefits for each piece of property. And I'm not sure, I know there's been some amendments to some of these laws. But anyway, this one, if it's been amended, that's what I need to know. It says, "The assessor shall proceed to assess the real property within the district, and he shall inscribe in a book each tract of real property and shall place in one column his valuation of each tract, or each tract or parcel of real property prior to the improvement." Which column may be marked assessed value of real property prior to improvement? And in another column, he shall place what he thinks will be the value of each tract or parcel of real property after the improvement. Which column may be marked assessed value of real property after improvement? Now, me, I was trained as an accountant. Accountants like detail, and they like it presented real clear. And I'm not sure, I just assumed that this is the way this is supposed to be presented from the assessor's office. And therefore, he gave me this one of the total benefits, but it really does not break out what the benefits or what the assessment was before and what it is after, he calculated it. And so therefore, seems to me like he needs to present a statement like that so that, and also that he needs to give a statement like this to all the property owners. And I'm not sure, did you give a statement like this to all the property owners? Or was it their responsibility to pick it up?
We filed the assessment rule according to the statute.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I don't know. The council was, well, yeah, that was fun.
Okay.
We, you know, we, the councils have, have a little bit of trouble hearing the answers. So if, uh, you know, we're, we're somewhat informal in terms of, you know, trying to make sure we understand this, and this is a new ballgame for us. And I know Mr. Fitzgerald certainly deserves our, uh, knowing decision. So, uh, I think the response was that, you know, when you make a presentation, we'll talk about some of these questions that Mr. Fitzgerald's asked.
Okay, well, I'll conclude here in just a second, but I'll make one other little comment here, uh, about the assessment given to Acme Brick. I know I've brought this out before, I'm not sure because I don't think the mayor was here, but he may have been. But this district was formed, as I've already stated, Acme Brick was not included in the original two meetings. They were not mentioned. They were not on the original outlines drawn for the original improvement district. Their assessed value of property is $416,469. My assessed value of property is about $16,000. Their assessed value of property amounts to 19.30% of the total assessment of all the property off, down into the district. And if Acme Brick had not agreed to this, maybe someone else would have. But they were the straw that broke the camel's back, so to speak, and got the district approved or got 51% of the assessed value of the property owners in the district. Based on the benefit analysis, Acme Brick will pay over a 15-year period. And I didn't know how long these bonds or these, the indebtedness of this district is far. But based on what I got from the benefit package before y'all, Acme Brick over a 15-year period will pay $6,765 on this road. My assessed value over a 15-year period for the same amount is $98,160 for 15 years. And I'm not sure if that's the total amount or not. I'm just kind of pointing out the discrepancy between me and Acme Brick is only one of Now, the other thing that I, I will conclude on is I made a few calculations, and I've looked at the paper and I've tried to find out the figures exactly how much this is going to be. I know in the North Little Rock Times, the engineer, Mr. Holloway, told the mayor, as it was quoted in there, that this district or the bids came in at $1.6 million. That's a quote from the North Little Rock Times. In the, uh, meeting that was held by the commissioners, I believe it was December the 18th, uh, it was quoted in the Mall Mel Monitor, and Mr. Thurman said the cost of the district was $2.4 million. And looking at the benefit analysis here, which I assume will be the total cost of the district, because when I talked to Mr. Larsson, he said the bids had come in higher than what they were expected to come in. The total on that is $2.66 million. Now, there's quite a discrepancy here between the 1.6 and the 2.6. So what I would like to have is a cost statement on this district. Since I'm going to be part of it and I'm expected to pay a lot if I don't get it changed, and I want to pay my fair share, what I can afford. I don't, I don't want anything given to me. I want to pay my fair share and what I can afford. But I would like to have a cost statement associated with the district that gives me a breakout of what all the costs are involved in doing this project. And I think that's a very fair request, that if I'm supposed to pay part of the bill, I should be able to at least look at, have a cost statement from which I can make an intelligent decision or a well-informed decision. Now, the other thing that I was wanting to point out is this district was formed, the assessed value of all properties is $2.1 million, we'll say. 26 of the properties that are in the district were petitioned as wanting to be in the district. 26 properties out of 62. 18 property owners signed the petitions to be in this district out of 55. That's 32.7% of the actual property owners. Of the 26 signed, 14 of those properties are on Collins Road. Now, if you're not familiar with Collins Road, it's, it's a road that was developed off of Count Massey for specifically developing for businesses. And, uh, anyway, that road has been substantially torn up because there's a big concrete plant down there and other reasons. But probably the main reason was the road was put in there and it was not up to standard. So of the 26 on this petition, 14 of them are on Collins Road. Anyway, getting on down, of those who signed, they represent 1,120,000 dollars or 42% of the total assessed value of all the property in this district. That's 42%. The others who have not signed this are 1,500,000 or 57.89%. The annual amount requested from those who signed is $86,000. The annual amount from those who did not sign is $118,000. In other words, those who signed are only going to pay about 42% of the cost, and those of us who did not sign are going to pay 57% of the cost or 58%. My contention is, since the emphasis on developing this district was 51% of the assessed value of the properties in the district, then it should be up to those people who signed this petition to at least pay for 51% of the value of this road. Because in essence, they are the ones who want the road. They are the ones who are going to benefit from the road the most. And so it only seems fair to me that they should be belly up to the bar, so to speak, be big enough to say, "Look, we know this road's going to benefit us more than you, Mr. Fitzgerald. You've lived out there all these years, you got by without a road. No dirt road, no bumpy road, and it will be nice for me to ride on a smooth road." But by the same token, please don't let them take my property from me so that I'll have to subsidize their developments to the Country Club of Arkansas or anybody else for that matter. I want to pay my fair share, but I don't believe that that's my fair share. And I appreciate the attention that you have provided for me. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, would you mind answering a question or two?
That's alright.
Alderman Pommis and then Alderman Yuley.
I know it's been farmland for these many years. How is it zoned now?
Well, I think it's I too is zoning, zoning.
They just, did you ask for that or they just come in and?
No, sir. No, sir. Okay. Uh, we were taken into the city, I'm not sure exactly when. All of a sudden, we woke up and we were in the city of North Little Rock. But anyway, that's, I'm glad I'm there, doesn't matter.
Alderman Yuley.
How many acres do you own?
20.
You own 20 acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you ever own any more than that?
No, sir.
Okay. Have you ever had any of it for sale?
Yes, sir. But I had it for sale because my father-in-law was in a wreck in 1986.
Mm-hmm.
And he got in bad health. And I thought that, uh, my wife and I were going to have to go up and help take care of him. But that didn't materialize, he happened to die before we did that, so.
How much was it in acres?
How much was it when I bought it?
Well, no, how much was it, were you trying to sell it for in acres?
At that time, I was asking $300,000.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions?
I've got some at the end.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald, you got any other comments right now?
No, sir.
You'll be, you know, just, we're going to just let everybody talk until everybody's talked out.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Thurman, uh, you're on.
I have with me Mr. Wilson, Jack Wilson, who is chairman of the commission, Jack Larsson, who is the assessor, and Fred Glover, who is the, on the board of assessment. Mr. Wilson would like to make a few comments first.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, uh, and then, then I, at an appropriate time, I've got some notes that I'd like to have somebody address.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, you got the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jack Wilson. I'm, I'm the chairman of the improvement district that's in question here tonight, as well as the managing partner of Country Club Development, which has been addressed a couple of times here tonight. And I very simply want to clear some issues as far as what Count Massey means to my We just recently spent almost $2 million in developing a parkway from the Country Club into what's referred to as the Diamond Center, which is the Mall Mel softball complex. We did that to, uh, in exchange, partially in exchange for some properties. We also own properties, though, that are in the city of North Little Rock. A matter of fact, we have several acres that are in the city of North Little Rock. And in the purchase of some of the properties from the city of North Little Rock were actually purchased from the city of Mall Mel, which is somewhat unique in the aspect that part of our agreement to purchase, uh, hinged on them supplying utilities to that property. So we paid quite handsomely for sewer to be placed on this North Little Rock property that is now being put into the improvement district. And we'll abandon the Mall Mel sewer. But I, I simply want to put these things out here to explain our, our situation as developers. We have other alternatives. We have had other alternatives. The properties that, that were mentioned that were catty-cornered to Mr. Fitzgerald, and I, and I understand very well Mr. Fitzgerald's position in this, and my family is a farm family. My parents are hill farmers in Stone County. And I understand, uh, the burden that can be placed on people with, with unwanted assessments. But in the, in the overall concept of this thing, we have 20 acres that he alluded to that's, that's catty-cornered across from him, and there is an assessment placed on that. But what is not clear is the fact that once that is developed and we're in the process of developing, the assessment will go up appreciably. Uh, any development, as each parcel along this improvement district is developed, then the valuation goes up with the worth of the developed property and the district pays off sooner because it collects more money from me on my developed property. If, if an individual is not developing his property, of course, that won't be the case. It'll, it'll take the initial value and it'll, it'll pretty much freeze at that point. But we brought in 20 acres that is contiguous to our Mall Mel Country Club Development and turned it to Count Massey and put an outlet onto Count Massey to put it into this district. And the reason we did all this, in spite of what you may hear, the main reason we did it is because the community needs this road. The community needs this improvement. The Country Club Development is probably the one that needs it least of anybody. We already have bought our road. We have already bought our sewer. We've already bought all of what we need to develop our property. We do not need Count Massey to develop our property. But the community needs it. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that while the, the assessment doesn't reflect our entire cost because a good portion of this road, some 1,300 feet, I believe, we will be paying far 50% of the road out of pocket in and above what the Count Massey Improvement District pays for. So we're catching it from, from both directions, but either way, we would have, you know, we would have been obligated to build that half of the road. But now, we've got to build it on a schedule because to make this deal work, we've got to build it when the community needs it, not when we need it. And every foot of the road that we will build has got a four-lane road immediately on the other side of it, so we don't need it for access. And I just want to point that out. We're not out there trying to take advantage of the people up and down in Count Massey. We have gone way beyond and are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to benefit the community because we feel like the community's better, our development will be better. And that's the only reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I'm going to ask Mr. Larsson to answer the questions that the council may have about this.
Yeah, Mr. Larsson, let me just pose a few, uh, that you can, if you wouldn't mind addressing. One is the, uh, I think Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned some property that was excluded. Uh, I don't know if you heard him say that was catty-cornered from his, or at least he asserted that it was excluded.
There, there was one piece, there was a 40-acre piece that belonged to Mr. Greenfield that was, was further east along Count Massey after it turns back to the east and goes down to the ball field down there. There was 40 acres that was, that was considered in the district in the initial discussion, uh, that was subsequently deleted out of the district at the same time that, that the Acme Brick property and McDonald's and two or three others were added in. Uh, and Mr. Greenfield, I'm certain that all, all he was going to get, he was going to have to pay in effect for, for all of the road in front of his quarter-mile. And he's, and his decision was, it's not ready to be developed, that he'll pay the cost when it's time for his 40 acres to be developed, and pay all of the cost.
So you're saying that there will be no developed road in front of Mr., this acreage that was excluded?
That's correct.
So there's, there's no road that will be developed in front of the acreage that was excluded?
That's correct.
Okay.
And one other thing, if, uh, at the time this was done, when we were first talking about it, we were trying to decide where the district boundaries went, what properties would benefit. And we looked all the way down to, to Mr. Greenfield's road, but to run the sewer down there, not to mention the road, to run the sewer down and serve that 40 acres would have been, uh, I mean, it would have tripled the cost of what we've got now or doubled it.
A couple, a couple other points. Uh, the, the Acme Brick, uh, assessment has been raised on several occasions.
Right.
I'd like, I'd like for you to address that.
Right. In fact, there's two of them that would kind of fall into, into that same category. One would be the McDonald's property, uh, and, and the Acme Brick that are both right at the corner of Count Massey. The, I believe that the engineer thought that both of those properties had all of the improvements in, all of the street improvements. And when they, when they did additional investigation, they found that the McDonald's, they have curb and gutter, but it doesn't go the entire length of their property. So the district is going to, to add the curb and gutter for some additional 50 or 75 feet on their property to make it conform to the other street improvements that the district's going to build. The same, the similar thing on the Acme Brick side, theirs has already been widened to the, to the full width that, that the district was going to build. And all that the district is going to do on, across the Acme Brick is really just to put in a curb to make it conform. So the benefit to those, both of those properties is very low in comparison to the value of those properties.
One other thing, uh, I know that I talked to Bob Holloway, and if my memory serves me, I think he said some work that he estimated that should have been done was 1.8 million and it came in at 1.6 million. Are we talking about, so I, I mean, Mr. Fitzgerald quoted, I think, me in the Times, and that's what I do recall, 1.6 million. Is that on a road or is that on a sewer or is that on just a portion of the work that's being done or am I, am I in error?
The total construction contract, now that doesn't include engineering, anything like that. The total construction contract is a million, 600 and roughly $50,000. Bob Holloway's engineering fees is approximately $200,000, maybe a little more than that. And then there, one of the problems you have on this one is it won't be, it won't start being collected until 2005, so you have to have a debt service reserve and capitalized interest to carry the bond issue. interest to carry the bond issue from the day, from the day we get it up to the time where we first start making payments on it. In other words, we have to borrow the money to make the first two years of payments on principal interest.
I think we're a real big with a hydro plant and that kind of an issue.
Yeah. And that, that's roughly $350,000.
But, but so, but I know that Mr. Holloway, when, when he spoke with me, seemed to be very pleased that he thought that his guesstimated cost was 1.8 million for the construction contract, and that bids came in, 200, roughly $20,000 less than what his guesstimated cost was.
The total, the total thing, oh, from the 2.4 million that we originally estimated ought to be about 2.2, about $200,000 that was saved off the construction contract.
So my quotation in the Times was accurate in terms of the, the contract and the save.
Yes.
And then I know Mr. Fitzgerald asked for a cost statement. I think that's public, that should be public information, I assume, as to the allocation of your cost, isn't it?
Right.
And that would be available to anybody, I would assume.
That is correct.
Now, that's all the questions that I have. Alderman Gibson?
Mr. Thurman, in your calculations of your bond issue, what, what, what bond rate do you anticipate? What was, what was the number that was used in your calculations, or Mr. Larsson?
5.6.
Oh.
5.1.
Five and a, uh, the, the, the cost estimate are the annual charges based on a 25-year bond issued at five and a quarter. But it requires a 1.25 cushion. So if your debt service is $1,000 or a dollar, you have to collect a dollar a quarter. So it makes a 25-year district pay out in 17 years.
So this is a 25-year bond issue, not a 15-year bond issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it'll pay out in approximately 17 years.
Yeah, if there's no change in the, in the amount of benefits, there's no development, and the, the collections remain constant, if a 25-year district at that, at a 1.25 cushion will pay out in 17 years.
You have a millage to do this with, a flat millage, and as the property value goes up, then, let's say the 40 acres or 20 acres that's being developed across there with houses on it, is, is the millage will be five mills or three mills or something?
Well, it's really not a millage. I mean, it's, it's, it's similar, and, but, but it's applied, it's, it's a levy rate, and it's, and it's applied to the, to the, to the amount of benefits. And as those properties are developed, then they will be reassessed by the improvement district based on, based on the, the new use and the new amount of benefits. But what you anticipate when we go from the, from the unimproved 20 acres that's just grassland across from Mr. Fitzgerald, a catticorne that, that, that they're already developing, when that becomes lots and commercial or, or industrial lots, the, the rate of collection on that is going to double or triple from what it, from what it already is. So what it does is brings more money into the district, and it, it would allow the district then to pay out, to pay those, call the long bonds and to pay out even quicker.
Okay, now the last question. 'Cause I asked this the time before, and I, I don't think that I ever got around to asking the way we needed to. I understand Mr. Fitzgerald's situation very well. Is there any way that the tax portion of his property can be deferred until any time that a portion of that property sells? And only at that point, is that, is it collected at that point? That would allow him to remain there?
I can't address that.
Because if you, if you've got a bond issue that's going from...
You cannot. I can answer you real quick. You cannot. You have to treat every taxpayer out there equally, and that means that, that the benefits have to be assessed equally and have to be collected equally. If Mr. Fitzgerald's property is benefited by $40,000, but as a result of this road and another 20 acres is 40, you can't charge him 20 and the other one 40.
Okay.
You have to do everything equal to all the people.
I guess I have one more question then.
All right.
Have you shopped this bond issue in today's market?
We have, haven't even had a proposal from the bond issue. We've been waiting to get this all resolved so that we can have it. They're supposed to be...
Because...
We're supposed to meet on January the 29th with, with two bond councils, I mean, two bond councils.
Mr. Thurman, we, we are seeing a lot of bond issues across the state of Arkansas. None of them are coming in in the five and a quarter rate.
Well, let's hope we're good, we're better off than that. I mean, that's just what we use for our figures, based off what we had when we started this.
Mr. Sissons, excuse me for interrupting. What, tonight, we're gonna talk about borrowing 4 million. What's our rate?
It's only a five-year, though. It's a 2.26.
Yeah, that's five years.
You have to understand that you are talking about the city of North Little Rock and not an improvement district. The improvement district does not, unfortunately, fall back on the full faith and credit of the city of North Little Rock, and improvement districts are not the same risk as the city of North Little Rock, as much as I wish they were. So the risk is greater, there will be, it will not be that sort of rate, Martin. There's just no way an improvement district that I've ever seen got one that rate.
If you go 25 years, you could pay that much, based on today, because looking where, look at 30-year bond issue, where 30-year notes are now.
Yeah, we'd love it. I mean, obviously, the least, the amount...
No. You could end up paying five and a quarter on a, on a 25. That's somewhere close to where the 30-year note is now.
Well, that's what we assumed, and we have, I mean, we didn't go out and get it. We didn't, we just talked around and tried to find out what, basically.
Where did, where did I get...
This was, this was six months ago, too.
Where'd I get the misinformation? Somewhere along the way, this was a 15-year bond issue.
I think Mr. Fitzgerald said that. It actually, that probably is not gonna be too far from correct already, and I'll have to rely on Jack on this, but already, we're gonna have to do a reassessment next year because of all of the lots that have been planted and the development before, before the, the construction is even over good. We'll be reassessing the property and reassessing the benefits, which will mean, you know, the undeveloped property goes down, the developed property goes up, so that will be, so it probably is not too far from that.
Let me, Alderman Height, and then Alderman Vestal.
Mr. Thurman, Mr. Larsson, for those of myself that like to learn something new every day, I, I have a couple of questions. One is, I just want to hear y'all say that Mr. Fitzgerald's calculations are correct and right on the, right on the numbers.
I, I didn't really hear his, his calculations as to, yeah, other than the projection on 15 years, but I, let me, let me...
So I tell you, I tell you, I pay in 98,000 plus over a 15-year period.
Well, let me, let me put it more in perspective. His assessment, his sewer benefit per acre is $1,239. Country Clubs of Arkansas is $2,212 per acre and $1,300 per acre, and it goes on down. His, I believe, is the cheapest per acre, one of, one of the lowest rates per acre there is. On Count Massey Road, he will be paying $3,000 per acre. I mean, front foot doesn't make a bit of difference, it's the acreage.
That was, that was gonna be my next question.
Yes, and, and the Country Club Development down there that, that's already got their road is gonna be paying $6,250 per acre for Count Massey Road.
And my, my second question was, in as simple of terms as possible, so I can understand it, what is the formula or the equation that y'all go through to assess the value of this property?
Well, well, there's not just, just a simple formula, but it's, but the, the difference, we, we look at, at differences in size and use of the property from, from residential to commercial. I may, I mean, from the existing uses, which, for, for the, there were four or five large tracks that are currently idle. The Fitzgeralds is one, there's one across, directly across the road from him. I treated those in one category, and then looking at the size of the property and the amount of frontage. He has 20 acres with 660 feet of frontage on the road, as opposed to a five-acre piece that's, you know, 330 on the road and 660 deep, you know? It's, the, the, the rate of benefits is much higher for a small piece than it is for a larger, larger piece. So it's not just size, and it's not just frontage, it's, it's kind of a combination. You know, you could have a 20-acre piece that lays, you know, with a quarter of a mile of frontage and 660 deep, or you can take the same 20-acre piece and turn it the other way, and you get a completely different rate of benefit because of these types of improvements.
Fair market value.
It's, it's part of the, of it, yes. One thing that, that was brought up is the statute under which this district was formed, and it's my understanding and my, my interpretation of, of the statute, and I don't recall the, the number, but I believe that's all that's required in this type of district, in a municipal improvement district, is just for, for filing what I have filed. There are other types of districts, suburban improvement districts, property owner improvement districts, and there's a whole host of others that do require a different reporting format. But this type of district, I don't believe, I believe we've, we've followed the, the statute in what was, what has been filed.
Alderman Vestal?
Yes. Now, when the property, it's the Country Club of Malm, uh, Country Club of Arkansas owns, when that develops, is that the only parcel that are gonna be reassessed, or is the entire district going to reassess?
We would look at the entire district for changes that are taking place since the last time it was reassessed.
So even though theirs may go up, his will probably remain the same, because his cost-benefit is gonna be the same, should be the same.
Right. His would stay, his would stay the same.
His would be idle.
Yeah.
So if, so if, if somebody went out there and built the Taj Mahal at $500 million, it, his bill's not gonna change, even though his benefit is, even though that assessment for that property, that other property is, is so large.
Okay. What happens? You're, you're right. That's, that, that's right. But what happens is, the district has, has a certain amount of debt, and when that debt is paid off, it goes away. So when we, when we have this new improvements that come in, more dollars come into the district that pay off that debt sooner. So while, while a particular property owner may have a, a bill of $6,000 a year, for example, and if the district, if nothing happens, he's gonna pay that for 15 years. But all of a sudden, we have a lot of new development that comes in where he only has to pay that for 10 years. So while his annual bill doesn't go down, the total cost goes down, or his total payments go down.
Alderman Vestal, you finished?
Yes.
Alderman Berry, and then Alderman Thomas.
What I, what I'm still real unclear on is the already developed parcels, tracks, like Acme Brick and the larger parcels. You said their formula is different and higher because of their asset, their asset value?
No, I don't.
Or is it figured all on the amount of road frontage and the amount of space?
It's, it's a combination of road frontage and, and size of the parcel, what improvements are actually being built.
What about improvements that are already there?
If, in, in the case of Acme Brick, they, the benefits that they get, they've already built the road that, that the district is building just beyond them. So their, their benefit from the road improvement is less than the piece next door that would have the same amount of frontage.
Now, what I'm saying is, it's still not, it's still not equal, because National Home Centers has 337 trips a day of automobiles in and out of their, their parcel, and he goes home one time a day. He uses 20 liters of sewer a day, they use 800 liters of sewer a day. It's still not equal.
The, the assessment is not, is not charged to, or the benefit is, is not, doesn't run with the property owner. It runs with the land. And the, the value of that, of that street improvement and the sewer is there to that property owner, is there to that property, to that 20 acres, whether or not the, the, I mean, you could have a sewer line, and in many cases, is not hooked up because an existing septic tank works fine.
So virtually, what we're saying here is that whether he wants to use it or not, he's gonna be assessed for using it.
His value, his property is enhanced to the, to by virtue of those improvements there. His property is worth more because of...
I still don't understand. If he doesn't want to develop the property, why can't we assess it later if it's sold?
That's not what the, the statute tells us to do. It doesn't provide for that. That's, that's the unfortunate part of, of this, is it there, it does create hardships in some cases.
Well, it, it's a terrible hardship. I wouldn't want to face it, and if I had my own farm, and I wanted to keep it, and it was my family's, and you were trying to do this to me, I'd be screaming and kicking too.
I, I understand.
So, I mean, I, I see, I see the man's problem, and if he ever sells it, yeah, I want whoever buys it, and if they develop to pay for it. But as long as he wants to keep it for cows and ducks and pigs and horses, and whatever's out there right now, in his own personal home, I don't see why he should have to pay $98,000 for 15 years of use, when he travels up and down the road one time a day or two times a day and loses, and uses one tenth of 1% of the sewer that's gonna go through there. It's not fair. And I, I don't care any way you lay it out, any way you corner the property off, it's still not fair.
Well, we're not arguing the merits or demerits. I think we each make our decision, you know, at, at the point, Alderman, and, and we're asking questions now. I don't think we're asking, being asked to decide unless, Mr. Thurman, are you asking, would you rather us try to decide this evening? I have indicated, you know, that we will try to, you know, come up with an answer on our next council meeting, but you, you know, if you want to...
As you've mentioned before, this is one of the first times I've ever, ever been involved with this. It would, would help us get through with it, get the time limits over, but it's up to the council, it's at the pleasure of the council.
All right. Well, I, I'll keep, you know, at this point, I'll, you know, I certainly listen to any comments the council might want to make, but my inclination is to put a resolution, just I ask the city attorney, unless there's a different sentiment on the council. All right, just one second. Alderman Thomas, are you finished? Alderman Berry? Alderman Thomas?
I guess we hope it pays out in 15 years, but it could go 25. So that's the reason you're putting the 25?
It, it could go 25 if there were a bunch of delinquencies. If, if people didn't pay. That's why they have the 1.2, is to protect the bond home.
Uh, you know, let me ask this question. What happens if this council say cuts Mr. Fitzgerald's assessment in half?
Everybody else's goes up. I mean, it's, it's got to, got to raise everybody else's. And, and as a matter of fact, what we'll have to do is go back and reassess it, because all the other people that are in the same shape that he's in, we'll have to treat them the same way this council treated them, treated him. And so as a result, there are other people who own 20-acre tracks that are, are basically idle that will have to go back and be treated. Jack will have to look at again and determine.
Alderman Thomas, you finished? Alderman Gibson?
And, and part of this, I'm gonna go to another part of the issue, as part of this property is tied to a cost of sewer. Could that portion of the money until, and then, and then do a sewer, a sewer hook on speed? You're, you're gonna have the money. You're gonna have the money, because you don't know if the bond issue's gonna be 15 years or 25 years. At some point in there, you will assume that they will hook on the sewer. Maybe they won't. But if you've got, I get sewer costs, and I'm, I'm kinda like $1,239...
Man, man, let me stop you just a minute. And, and Mr. Berry, this may be unfair, but the, the assessment of benefits has nothing to do with the person who is using the land or the use of the land. The assessments of benefits says that if we put this improvement, this, this water line, it will have been subdivision, then the value of each lot out there is going up. Now, when you try to defer, one, when you try to say, okay, that's not fair to this fellow over here, 'cause he's got one little acre, and he only uses that water line once a day, the fact remains, how are you gonna ever collect it? The, when you, when he sells the property, he's gonna reap the benefits from the improvement. He's gonna get the, the value of that property's going up. So I don't know how you can do that legally. It's, it's very difficult to do, if, if possible.
Alderman Gibson, and then I've got a question for our city attorney.
Yeah, I realize. The other thing is, after this public hearing is closed, I have one question.
Okay. Let me ask a question, Mr. City Attorney. Will this council make a decision in accordance with its normal ways to act on a resolution? In other words, you know, well, I mean, you know, if... In other words, you know, will, I mean, you know, I mean, am I ex officio and only vote if my vote needs to be, do we act? I mean, how, you know, how, we're, we're a jury, but do we act in the form of a resolution or how, you know, do we all, all nine of us vote? Do I get an equal vote? I mean, tell me about it. Do you know how, how I-
Well, actually, under the statute, as I mentioned, it's fairly old and arcane statutes and, and the language used within the statute merely indicates it will be heard and disposed of. It, it doesn't really state, uh, resolution, ordinance, action, uh, what specific type of action there is. I think from the standpoint of, of clarity, that a resolution probably is better and that you would be treated as, uh, on any other regular legislation.
Then you need to give me an idea of whether or not, you know, I'd have the ability to veto whatever, if there was something that I chose not to support, uh, do I have that ability? I mean, you know, you need to give us, you know, you or the city attorney's office needs to give us a little guidance, uh, on how we should formally dispose of this in terms of decision and, and I guess I think we're all probably agreeing then, not, not hearing anybody object to, to do it at the next council meeting with some guidance, uh, as to who has rights, responsibilities and, and responsibility, so.
It's an interesting question. It's, it's a quasi judicial decision. It, it may not be purely legislative.
Well, we're looking for guidance. Uh, Alderman Vestal?
Uh, Mayor, I have, uh, a couple of requests. One, I would like a map showing the cost benefit of the entire district. I'm sure you have that available to you. If you don't, Mr. Hall will, she'll be able to get that to you.
Okay. And I would also-
Map showing the cost benefit?
That's, uh, yeah, uh, as- It's listed in here where the total benefit for each property?
Yeah.
I would like a map displaying the, the property and the benefit. And also, I would like a map, uh, uh, a, uh, listing that shows the current, the current assessed value and the assessed value after the, after the improvement.
Excuse me?
The current assessed value of the property.
By the, by the county assessor.
By the county assessor.
Okay.
And so I can compare apples to apples.
It's not, no, 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 okay. I know.
Do y'all, can, can I, can I get, uh, you to supply the information to Ms. Whitby about what's the easiest way to get in contact with those of you here, so including Mr. Fitzgerald, so that if any of the council has any questions, they can contact Ms. Whitby either by email or telephone or mailing address or, you know, whatever different ways that, that any of us might have any desire to, uh, pursue any questions or ask for any information. If you could provide that to Ms. Whitby, then, then each of us could know how to contact, uh, the people who have been before us. I have all that information in my office and Ms. Whitby has all my numbers, I think.
Ms. Whitby, if you just get that so we don't have to go through two or three connections and we, we like our lawyers, but sometimes they're hard to get in touch with. Our city clerk is down there all the time. Any other questions? Alderman Whitaker?
I have a question. Question. Your first reaction was, this is a problem, you have an actual relationship, you have a business, you have a, on top of, this is-
Yeah. Yeah. But it's-
It's 1,400 dollars to him.
Well, let's just do one at a time now. All right, Mr. Whitaker's got the floor.
Yeah, you have a point. Try to break things. Current assessment for the property, the county assessor's, can't do something, so we should check with the, 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 the-
Yes. Yeah, the, the, the assessment from the, from the county assessor's, uh, faces is separate and apart from, from the assessment of benefits for the improvement district. But if, if you wanted to see the, the two lists, I can certainly provide those lists for you.
Send me your initial questions. Project first.
That's correct.
Just a second. Are you finished, Alderman Whitaker? Alderman Berry, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I had a question. Oh, it, it, it wouldn't go to total assessment until after the improvement district's paid off.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't follow your question.
Uh, the county reassess it as, as improved district. Once the improvement district's paid off, then they will-
Oh, what the county does, when they go in and, and do a market, their market value assessment for, for general taxes, uh, I don't know when they pick that up. They'll probably pick it up before the district is paid out. As soon as the, that street goes in and the sewer line goes in, I would, I would wager that they probably pick it up even though it's still, uh, not paid for.
Then, are we saying that there's a possibility that they would still be paying on the improvement district plus be paying higher mileage rate?
I think it probably happens all the time. I think it happens all the time.
Uh, any other questions? Any other comments? Uh, with that, uh, I'm gonna adjourn this public hearing and, uh, the, uh, council will, uh, consider this, uh, along with advice from our city attorney at the next, uh, council meeting. And Alderman Gibson has a question. Uh, Mr. Thurman?
Mr. Thurman, on page four of five of this, the city of North Little Rock is listed at 30 Collins Drive is where the mailing address is for 17,200 dollars. Obviously, they got the wrong mailing address unless the city, unless city councils, city halls moved, but we're shown as a 17,200 dollar benefit for a piece of electric property that we own out there. Uh, obviously, traditionally, the city of North Little Rock does not pay improvement taxes nor-
As I advised you in the break, what, uh, Mr. Larsson picked up was from the county assessor's records. And if it's, if it was assessed over there, then we picked it up.
Why did you mail the notice to 30 Collins Drive?
That's the property address, not the notice.
Well, I don't, I don't think that E.J. Fox up there, he's, his mailing address is supposed to office box 9006, Cersey, Arkansas, and that's not the address.
I can only tell you what I've already said, that the, the fact is that that's the way it was listed at the county assessor's office and that's all I can say.
Someone, that's, that happens to be Brent and Sam's address, so I guess they were out there picking up cookies.
Yeah.
So we, we don't own any property out there, all?
We do own a piece of property out there, but, uh, traditionally, traditionally, uh, cities do not accept on that property where we lease it to someone else and have an income, like airport property.
We just consider that 300,000 that we gave to the district part of our payment there, Mr.-
We understand.
Okay.
But there's no reason, I don't see how we can even be considered as part of it.
May I say a word, please? I'm Joe Reynolds. I appreciate the opportunity to comment and I believe Mr. Fitzgerald's the only fellow down here from the district that is asking for relief and I believe that the city council here is the board of equalization on this and I would, I would believe that he needs a relief and I don't think he has any intentions of improving the property. And I do know that, uh, according to state law, that, uh, there will be reassessments on market value on property every five years probably, so it could get reassessed four or five, three, four or five times before the bonds are ever paid off. And, uh, I know that according to the, I guess, the law and the statutes, that they may not be able to give him any relief if he don't use something, but certainly the board of equalization has the authority to give him some relief and if they assess other property owners out there, that's just, that's the way the world works. The man's asking for relief. I don't see anybody down here except him asking for relief and I think you ought to give him some relief. Thank you.
We appreciate it, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you very much. Uh, let's go back to the, uh, regular agenda, our long agenda now that we've got to it.
Resolution 0401, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, please call it.
This is a resolution reappointing Murray Whitaker to the Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Who's with us?
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson, Yildin, Robinson, Thomas, Berry, Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Ordinance 0401, Alderman Height?
Please call it.
This is an order to allow especially used apartments in a C1 zone for certain real property located 801 through 819 West McCain Boulevard, North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move the suspended real places on second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
This is an order to allow especially used apartments in a C1 zone for certain real property located 801 through 819 West McCain Boulevard, North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Uh, move the suspended real places on third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
An order to authorize an issue of short-term financing obligation by the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, allocating tax revenue sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on the short-term financing obligation. First reading.
We'll go ahead and take it to the third reading. We've got an amendment if we can and then we'll discuss any questions, uh-
Move suspended real places on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
On the emergency Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
An order to authorize an issue of short-term financing obligation by the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, allocating tax revenue sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on the short-term financing obligation. Second reading.
Move suspended real places on the third reading.
Second.